Good evening and Happy New Year to everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bennington?
Here.
Mrs. Downs?
Here.
Mrs. Eubank?
Here.
Ms. Larmour?
Here.
Mr. Pullman?
Here. If you could please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think we need two roll calls there, do we? Perrysburg Schools welcomes you to the Commodore Building and we thank you for attending tonight's Board of Education meeting. We care about the safety of our students, our staff, families and guests. And please note that there are exits on both east and the west sides of the building and there's an AED located right outside these cafeteria doors. We are located at 140 East Indiana Avenue. Again, we thank you for joining us in supporting Perrysburg Schools. At this time, we'll have the election of a new board president and we'll ask for nominations.
I'd like to nominate Ray Pullman.
Second.
Any other nominations? Other nominations, nominations are closed. Roll call, please, Mrs. Harrington.
Mrs. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Larmour?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank? Oh, Mr. Bennington?
Yes.
Mr. Pullman?
Yes. Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you for-
Yay!
And with a whimper, there it is, good job.
Well, again, thank you for your support and for this board and all that we've done together this past year and look forward to 21, hopefully, more educational issues than COVID issues.
Yes, amen to that.
Yes, yes. And now we'll go to item number three, the election of a board vice president. At this time, we'll call for nominations for board vice president.
I'll nominate Eric, please.
Thank you.
Any other nominations? Okay, we'll close the nominations and-
Do we need a second?
Roll call, please.
Do we need a second?
I don't think we have, we don't have a second.
We didn't second?
We don't have to second it.
Oh, okay. Ms. Larmour?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank?
Yes.
Mrs. Downs?
Yes.
Mr. Bennington?
Yes.
Mr. Pullman?
Yes. Congratulations, Eric.
Yeah, thank you very much, look forward to the next year.
Item number four, to adopt the proposed agenda. And if you look again at what we have here, it's more timelines and dates and so forth, but we have a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a question, maybe, under Board Retreat, it says to be determined, I thought we finally had the date or since that's for dates, are we not doing it on February 13th now?
You know, if you, that's a great question. If you scroll down to the Board Retreat, item 5.4, we do have the date-
Okay.
-set and the location, I thought when it came to that, we could finalize that.
Okay, I was just confused why it was listed there as TBD instead of having the actual date.
Yeah, you know, that's on me, I loaded up those dates, I didn't have it in the document that I drew it from, but we did have that and we'll update that and fold it into the posted board meetings.
Okay, all right, we'll flog you later.
Thank you, Sue. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bennington?
Yes.
Ms. Larmour?
Yes.
Mr. Pullman?
Yes.
Mrs. Downs?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank?
Yes.
Okay, takes us to item number five, where we'll talk about meeting dates, board assignments and the board retreat. So we look at the first item that we want to look at is the time. It's been brought to my attention that we like to discuss the time that we would start our typical Monday board meetings, from a 5:30 start to a 6 o'clock start. I just bring that up for you to have for discussion. The dates are there, as you can see on the next page on your agenda. It's just a matter of the time.
Is there, what is the reason?
Mrs. Eubank, you want to speak to the time?
Yes, I felt when I was not on school board that 5:30 was a very difficult time for working people to attend a meeting. And even now, being on the school board, it's hard to make it there 30. And so to accommodate people in the public and get participation and attendance at the meetings is going to suggest moving it to 6 o'clock, people would not have to leave work in order to come and attend the meeting. I know when I went to attend a meeting to see my nephews who had gotten awards or et cetera, you know, my sister, my brother-in-law, they would have to leave work early to come and see things like that. So I have been asked why meetings are 5:30 and again, every reason that I just stated. It is hard for working people to make it to a 5:30 meeting when you work till 5:30. So I think 6 o'clock would be a better time. I personally, again, gave my personal opinion on that and I know other people have brought that up to me.
Wasn't one of the reasons why we did it at 5:30 was for staff and administration to not have such a large gap of time for them to be here and that it wouldn't run into bedtimes and late times later? Wasn't that the reason why we had it at 5? We even, I think we even talked about having it at 4:30 at one point in time.
Yeah, I think, and Gretchen, you can correct me if I'm wrong, since you're the veteran. The board meetings used to be at 7:30 PM and we didn't have a lot of public participation. So one of the things that the board discussed was, in hearing feedback, was part of the problem and challenges for parents is almost the opposite of what Mrs. Eubank is saying is, families were telling us, 7:30 is an inconvenient time because once we're home and we're getting dinner going and getting kids set with homework, it's very hard to leave and come back to a board meeting. And then the board meetings go on, you know, to a much later hour. So that was really the primary reason why there was that discussion to change. One of the benefits, it's still a long day for administrators, so that wasn't, you know, administrators would go home and come back. Now, it probably is a longer day, but at any rate, I think the deciding factor was just trying to get, and you know, when we do recognitions with families, you know, you know, families, you know, other people are home, on their way home at 5:30, so it's convenient to swing in, attend the meeting. And, you know, no matter which way you decide, you're never going to cover everybody and their unique situations. So Gretchen, I don't know if we covered that.
I think that hits it, we didn't notice any change in participation from the late, you know, evening to, I think it was actually 7, wasn't it?
Yeah, I don't remember.
I think it was 7. But those meetings often didn't end until midnight. There were many, many times they didn't. So that was part of the thinking, nobody really enjoyed an 11:30 adjournment. I wonder if on evenings when we're going to have, if we keep it at 5:30, but on evenings that we're going to have a-
Recognition?
Executive session.
Oh, executive.
We could do the executive session first and then come into the meeting, that would put us, and we could publicize the time. You know, we will start with award ceremonies at 6:30, at 6. I don't know what's more disruptive. You know, 5:30, at least you get a, you may have to leave work a little early, but you still don't disrupt the whole dinner and bedtime and... So I really don't- I don't, you know, I don't know if it would make a difference or not.
And I don't have an opinion one way or the other, so.
It's not, it's not so much also public participation as if someone's going to get up and speak. It is the award ceremony when you're coming to see someone. Again, getting there at 5:30 when most people work till 5:30, you have to take off early if you wanted to see your child, you know, in one of those participation things, so. I've heard that several times before I ran for school board and currently now.
Well, then, couldn't we just-
5:30, it's very difficult to make it to.
If there's another discussion-
Can we go ahead and have the meeting?
And so I'm, as a school board member, relating what I hear people in the public stating to me that 6 o'clock would be better.
Is there a motion on the floor then? Is there a motion someone would like to make?
I still have a question, if that's the issue, then why not go ahead and keep it at 5:30? If we have awards, just set the awards at 6 o'clock. There are other things that we can do in our meetings from 5:30 to 6, which won't let us be starting so late, won't inconvenience the administration that comes, but we could set awards and recognitions at 6 o'clock then. Which to me seems more inconvenient because that's dinner. Yeah, I just, I'd almost think that you'd want to make it go earlier than later, but then you run into practices after school.
Right. Anybody else have a thought, opinion?
You know, if my child's being honored for all-state choir or all-state track, I'm going to say to my boss, "I'm sorry, I have to leave early." If they're playing in the state meet, they surely say to their boss, "Hey, I'm going to Columbus on Friday. I won't be able to work because my child is running the 100-yard dash at the state meet." And I think that parents- Parents want to be there at these important moments in their child's life and I think most workplaces accommodate that.
Okay, anybody else?
Then maybe 6 o'clock would be a better time where then they don't have to get off work early-
Do you want to make a motion, Kelly?
At a school board meeting.
Do you want to make a motion? Kelly, can you hear me?
I propose we move the school board meeting to 6 o'clock for our Monday meetings.
Is there a second? I do not hear a second, so therefore it dies for lack of a motion, a second motion.
So I move we have the board meetings at 5:30 as outlined in the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion?
I think it might be a nice idea if we would announce to the public that award ceremony will be at 6 or 6:30, whenever we decide to put it in the agenda.
I'd be interested in finding a way to get that done, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's a good compromise. That's a good compromise.
Yes, okay. So the motion is that we would start the meeting is at 5:30 and we have a first and a second? Roll call, please, Mrs. Harrington.
Mr. Bennington?
Yes.
Mrs. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Larmour?
Yes.
Ms. Eubanks?
Yes.
Mr. Pullman?
Yes.
Couldn't we, in regard to that, having the recognitions at a different time, I would think that that would possibly relate to the group or individuals that are being recognized. Maybe they would rather be recognized at 5:30. I mean, would that be something that you could ask Tom before, you know, we know that we're going to have X group and Y group being recognized and just ask for their general consensus and we'd be happy to work around their schedules?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, because if you recall, there's moments where people leave here right away because they have to go to rehearsals or practice and- So it's, you know, we'll work with those that are bringing it, you know, that are coming and we'll do our best to try to not disrupt the meeting too much, but there's some ideas, just thinking about it. You know, we could stage people in the gym and have them come in and just be more orderly about it. So there's some things that we could work on, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that takes us to item 5.2, Board Work Sessions, and the only thing we need to do there is talk about a time. We do have the dates and the location and we've had them at 7:30 AM. You want to keep it the same or you want to adjust the time?
I'm looking at the wrong thing.
I myself prefer that the work sessions be in the morning because it sets the tone for a less formal meeting, I think. And a work session really, a lot of the times is educational for us and it's not a policymaking, a, you know, no form, not as formal of an agenda. So I think the morning time is a good time.
Yeah, the morning time has historically worked best for me and my schedule and with other commitments I have in the evenings and it works well for my work schedule, so I'm in favor of 7:30 starts as well.
7:30 is what I'm hearing, 7:30 AM?
Yep.
I'll go ahead and make that motion for 7:30 AM if there's no more discussion.
Give a motion?
Give a motion.
Eric, is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? The motion is to accept a 7:30 AM work session meeting for the Board of Education on the dates that we have recorded in front of you on the agenda. Roll call, please, Mrs. Harrington.
Mr. Bennington?
Yes.
Mrs. Downs?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank?
Yes.
Ms. Larmour?
Yes.
Mr. Pullman?
Yes. Motion pass. So we go on to the next agenda item, which is simply looking at 5.3, which is committees that we'll serve on and appreciate the efforts of all of us to look at different skill traits that we have and assuming the responsibilities for these committees. As you can see your name there and the times that they meet. And I suppose those times could change once your committee holds a meeting and decides what's best for your group. So although it's recorded, as you see it there, certainly your chair and you as board members can make those adjustments as necessary.
Can you tell us what a development committee is?
Yes, we've sure done that, I've sure done that the last couple of years and basically it's what's happening with the fundraising and Jeff Apke's role as our development director and Mr. Hostler is there as an attendee and we just see how we're doing with the fundraising and projects of that nature.
Okay.
Any other questions about committees?
Not a question, just a comment, I saw Sue's name as legislative liaison, that's all I needed to see.
That's right. As we, yes, we thank her for that, for sure.
I'll move that we accept this, this is outlined.
Second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay, Mrs. Harrington, roll call, please.
Mr. Bennington?
Yes.
Ms. Larmour?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank?
Yes.
Mrs. Downs?
Yes.
Mr. Pullman?
Yes. And we go to 5.4, the Board Retreat, we have a date selected, we have the time determined, it's the location that we're after this time. So location, the discussion has been, do we meet right here or we've had it at the Hilton? And Mr. Hostler, you want to make any comments on that?
Yeah, so we've, each year, the board schedules a retreat that takes place and it's an opportunity for the board to meet, to discuss kind of the goals that it may have for itself throughout the year. Oftentimes, it'll just, it involves bringing in somebody from OSBA to talk about best practices and opportunities for, to improve communication and do those sorts of things. There aren't many times when you think about a board that it can meet together because any time the five of you are together, it's a public meeting. So this is an opportunity for the board to have a meeting, be able to talk about those things and not be necessarily, have anything else on that agenda per se that, you know, that we have to attend to. So it's kind of like investing in your own relationships, investing in your own, you know, boardsmanship and bringing in somebody from OSBA, the board is like that. Sometimes it's a half day, sometimes a full day because that's what they do. They dedicate their professional careers to getting, you know, think, getting, working with all the different school boards across the state and saying, "These are the best practices. This is how you can serve your public, your community better." So it's nice sometimes to have outside voices to come in to talk about those things. So we have discussed with OSBA to have a consultant here either for, and as we get closer to the planning, we can talk about a full day or a half day and plan for that. So that's the recommendation, you know, that we've had and following what we've done in the past with that as well.
Personally, I find that the retreats have been very valuable for me as a board member. The information that we receive, the dialogue that we have, the conversations. Being a pair of jeans and a shirt without a tie is always nice and comfortable, too. But it's been valuable for our board relationships, too. So I would like to suggest that we continue what we've been doing in the past and Hilton has been a nice location to get away from things and have a meeting.
I'll echo that, I mean, I think there's a lot of power in actually getting us out of our, you know, normal environment, for lack of a better word, and to see something different and be someplace different. You have different conversations, different brainstorming sessions. I agree, the paths that I've seen have worked out really well and they're actually, I mean, they're good meetings.
Any other comments?
So are we voting on where we think we should have it or we're just discussing?
We're just discussing right now, Mrs. Eubank, just discussing. Did you have some input?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Do you have something you want to say about the retreat to the board?
Oh, no, no. I mean, I think holding it at the Commodore Building, which, you know, we already have our meetings there, would be fine. I have no preference, just whatever is the least expensive for the taxpayers.
I'll go ahead and make a motion. I'll go ahead and make a motion then, that we have the retreat on the dates here at the time at the Hilton, as we have in the past.
Second.
Any other discussion? The motion is that we'll have the retreat at the Hilton, as we have in the past. Roll call, please, Mrs. Harrington.
Mr. Bennington?
Yes.
Ms. Larmour?
Yes.
Mr. Pullman?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank?
Yes.
Mrs. Downs?
Yes.
And now we come to that place in the agenda, what's called the consent agenda, which means there's the, it's practice where you have a lot of agenda items that really don't need much discussion, but perhaps there's questions that come up. But you can see here, we're looking at membership for the Ohio School Board Association, our official newspapers, standing authorizations on past practice, on attorneys, investments and so forth. And as you look further on, we can see that the LPDC, which is part of the teachers' contract, the meeting dates and what have you for certification. And then the 6.6, we did not join this last year for whatever reason it might have been, but it's certainly an important part of our role to be a part of this Ohio School Board Association and the Legal Assistance Fund. So that's the consent agenda. Do we have any questions on the consent agenda?
Yeah, I was wondering about 6.6 and I'm glad you brought it up because I don't remember not approving it. I don't know why we need to approve it this year if we didn't last year, so-
Probably because it's a monetary-
Can you refresh my brain on what happened with that?
Yeah, I, you know, I'm not 100% sure in terms of looking at in 2019, it was a separate standalone and there was, a decision was made to do it. And then there wasn't, that wasn't on the agenda in 2020. So look, you know, putting the agenda together, we wanted to make sure that we were calling attention to that. So not sure either, but we could blame it on 2020?
We had COVID.
But it is something that the board has participated in and certainly, as we just talked about, the Ohio School Board Association, you know, does professional development for boards. Where else would you go to get that kind of training and support? But they also have a legislative arm that's fairly important in terms of looking out for districts. And Ms. Larmour, I know you're very involved with OSBA and the things that they're doing and legislative actions and to be able to, OSBA is an organization to join into those conversations, this helps them do that, so.
So it's basically us donating to help get those legislative things done that they're doing? Okay.
Right.
Not like there's never anything like that for them to do.
Yeah, anything else with the consent agenda that you'd like to bring up at this time before I call for a motion? Okay, can I have a motion then to accept the consent agenda, items 6.1 through 6.6?
So moved?
Second.
Roll call, please, Mrs. Harrington.
Mr. Bennington?
Second.
Roll call, please, Mrs. Harrington.
Mr. Bennington?
I'm still a yes.
Ms. Larmour?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank?
Yes.
Mrs. Downs?
Yes.
Mr. Pullman?
Yes. Motion pass. That takes us to item number seven, which is adjourning from the special organizational meeting. We have a motion then to adjourn this part of the meeting.
I just want to make an addition before we go on in case it needs to be important for any silly reason that OSBA is now asking for a separation of the OSBA delegate and the Student Achievement Liaison and it's still listed as one here.
That's a good point because I've asked-
Yeah, because we have to send in two forms for that, so probably need to do that for them.
And you're willing to do that, right?
Yeah, yeah, I'll go ahead and do that.
Yes.
I'll mark it down.
Thank you for bringing that up to our attention.
Other than that, I move to adjourn.
Okay, we have a first and a second for adjournment. Mrs. Harrington, roll call, please.
Mr. Bennington?
Yes.
Mrs. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Larmour?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank?
Yes.
Mr. Pullman?
Yes. The organizational meeting has come to a close, thank you very much. And we'll stay right here and get ready for the next opening of our regular work session. And I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call, please, Mrs. Harrington.
Mr. Bennington?
Still here.
Mrs. Downs?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank?
Yes.
Ms. Larmour?
Here.
Mr. Pullman?
Yes, here. Guess we forget what we are, huh?
Yes, I'm here.
And so now we ask that we have a motion to adopt the proposed agenda for the work session.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions? Any discussion? Any questions? Roll call, please, Mrs. Harrington.
There was one thing. Mr. Pullman, we wanted to add to the agenda. I shared with the board in the communication, this, and I apologize for putting this on at this time. However, as you know, the, the Federal Cares Act expired January 1. And it wasn't until that period, a few days before the end of the year, that it was actually signed into law. So, we had approximately three days to, to look through it, and in it, Kelly Johnson, our executive director of HR, saw that there was some changes to the FF-CRA, and this is a portion of the law that mandated that employers offer 10 days to employees that they could take for COVID purposes. So, if you had to isolate or quarantine, there was 10 days that they could utilize for this. And what we found in the new law is that it was optional. And for employers, as an incentive, it was, there's a tax, a tax break that was given to employers if they were to allow that to continue. That doesn't apply to schools.
Oh, of course not.
So, so we had to make a decision within three days, what do we do? And, and the decision that I shared with the board is what we, and what we're recommending today is to allow employees to continue to participate in that program that was established, you know, in, in the fall, you know, for, when they returned to school. So, employees will still have 10 days that are available to them until March 31st, when this act expires. So, it would be no change to how we're operating today, and I think that's a benefit to employees to, to have those days there. We've seen what the impact that having to quarantine at no fault of their own while working can have, and to have a bank of 10 days, I think, is, is helpful. So, because of that, the agenda was posted. We, we got the final information, and, and now we're bringing it and asking you to add it to the agenda today.
Can we add that to 4.6? And 4.6 would be to propose a motion to extend the optional Families First Coronavirus Relief Act, FF-CRA, in accordance to the provisions passed in the COVID Relief Package passed December 27, 2020. The extension would expire after March 31, 2021. And that would be item 4.6 on the agenda.
Is that per incident or total?
Total. So, after that 10 days, then staff would have to dip into their sick bank or take unpaid days at that point in time. So, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Hostler, for pointing that out to us.
And is this, is this an additional 10 days? The first 10 days was with the first act, and this is an additional?
Uh, no.
Or it's for the school year?
It's for the school year, so, yeah. So, we're, we're continuing to offer it just as it existed before January 1st.
If, if a teacher is able to work from home while in quarantine, does it count as part of their 10 days, or how does that work?
So, so if, if, if somebody can work from home in that situation that you just suggested, then that person would not count as a sick day, because they're doing their job from home. So, when that happens, it works out well, because they still can do that. There are some instances where it's impossible for somebody to work from home, and, and that's where these days would come in to, to play. As a bus driver, you can't work from home, so.
That's a good concept.
Yeah, yeah. So, so that would be an example of having that, and so this, you know, the, I think, what will happen on March 31st, we don't know. There could be a change to this. It could be replenishing it. It could be letting it expire. The one good thing, I think, to, the concern for our staff, and I'll talk about this a little bit later, is that, you know, the, the governor has made school personnel a priority with vaccines, and hopefully by March 31st, we'll have our staff vaccinated, those that want to have a vaccine. And, and that will eliminate, at that point, a need to quarantine if they're exposed to someone who's positive. So, if all things line up and go well, that, that would be a huge benefit, and, and that program wouldn't be utilized as much.
When, when do we think the teachers will actually start to get vax, vaccine?
We'll, we'll, we'll get to that, but to answer your question, I don't know. But I do think that it could be, you know, and we'll talk more in detail. I, I don't mean to be glib about it, but we're not 100% sure. They're still getting through the tier 1A vaccines, so they really can't start the 1B until they get to a place where they have completed that, or at least completed it and have enough second doses set aside, because it's a two-dose vaccination. I think February, we're going to be planning on you being prepared for doses for that next tier, which is 1B, for school personnel. We're, we're planning on being prepared for that in, at February 1st, but it could be weeks earlier. It could be a little bit later. So, but, but we'll be prepared for it, and, and we'll talk more about that a little bit later.
Okay, we need a motion for the adoption of the proposed agenda.
So moved?
Second.
Roll call, please, Mrs. Harrington.
Ms. Ms. Larmour?
Yes.
Mr. Bennington?
Yes.
Mrs. Downs?
Yes.
Mr. Mrs. Eubank?
Yes.
Mr. Pullman?
Yes. And that might have been a couple of motions for that adoption. I'm not remembering.
We've sure adopted it now, though.
Okay, it takes us to item number three, superintendent's report. Mr. Hostler?
Sure, thank you. So, I, I don't know if, I know Mr. Jako is out in the hallway, and if, before I get started, I thought maybe he could come in just for a quick moment. We just wanted to introduce somebody here that, that will be appearing a little bit later on the, on the board agenda. So, you've may, I know the board was informed that we are having to replace retired football coach Matt Kriegel, and that was certainly, you know, certainly sad to see Coach Kriegel retire, but what a great accomplishment for him and the teams that he had. So, I know, talking with Mr. Jako, there were some pretty big shoes to fill, because Coach Kriegel is more than a coach. He's somebody who is just a terrific person, somebody that kids follow and attach themselves to, not only for a season, not only for a year, but for a lifetime. And so, want, not only do we want somebody that can win, but more importantly, we want somebody that can win, who also cares about developing the whole person, the whole student. And, and so, that's what we've had, and, and that's what we want to build on. So, I, I know Coach, you know, Coach Kriegel, talked to him about the process and, and who he liked and picked his brain. But in, in conversations with, with, with Chuck, it was a pretty important hire for, for the school district and, and what we want to do. You know, like it or not, football is next to cross-country and track. Football is the most, the most important, you know, most visible, not important, most visible sport. And so, there was a lot of pressure to make sure that we go out and, and get the right person. And I know we had over 60 candidates, and a committee came together, and, and we're very pleased to, to introduce our, our new head coach, who will also be joining our, our math department at Perrysburg High School. We, we have a math opening. I called somebody who was responsible for hiring him at Bowling Green and, and said, what do you, what can you tell me about, about Coach? And he said, "It was the best math interview, and he was the best, one of the best math teachers that, that we, I've ever seen." You know, and, and that's, that's pretty cool, because again, fitting what we want to do is, is just if you're great in the classroom, you're going to be great on the field or on the court, and we're always teachers at heart, and, and I think that's what we were really drawn to with, with this candidate. So, I'll turn it over to Mr. Jako, and you might want to say a few words, and. You want to use the mic so they can hear out in YouTube land? Thanks, Chuck.
So, yeah, when we introduced Dirk, what was it, last week or so, maybe two weeks ago, we had the media come in for a media event and a whole basketball game. I talked a little bit about, you know, the process itself, and I think every athletic director should have to go through a football hire. Check. Okay. So, in talking with the media, we talked a little bit about, you know, the process itself was, was rather intense over the last six weeks. You know, I've had a lot of amazing conversations with a lot of football minds, and, you know, Dirk put his application in. He was up against people from all over the Midwest and in the United States. I mean, we had candidates from Cincinnati, Dayton, Cleveland, Detroit, South Carolina. I had people reach out from, well, we interviewed somebody from Texas. The Zoom was done while he was at home down in Texas. And the one thing that immediately became apparent is what Mr. Hostler just said, is the passion that Dirk exhibited throughout this process immediately with the committee. His passion for coaching and teaching combined, and, and this was a, a hire that had a specific fit, a specific role that we were looking for. And there's no doubt that, that Dirk is, was that individual. Early in the process, he impressed the committee. I've been part of hiring teachers and, and coaches, and I can say, in, in all my years, when you do a committee group of eight people, very diverse group of eight, when we ranked our candidates, all eight people had, had Dirk Connor as number one. I've never seen that. It's usually a hodgepodge of a mixture of the same people within the top three, so it became very apparent early. And, and the one thing I want to, you know, mention is something interesting in The Blade. If you read The Blade yesterday, it had the top 21 predictions for 2021 for the sports in Toledo. Talk about the Wall-E, the Mud Hens, and like number 17, I didn't catch it in the morning, but I caught it later tonight, said Dirk Connor will be an instant success at Perrysburg. I truly believe that, and not to put, you know, the pressure thing, but that is true. Steve Jung and Mark Monroe are right. He's going to be an instant success. And that's not so much because of the wins and losses, but the, the quality of a human being we're getting, and the benefit, not just to football players, but to all of our students who have him as a math teacher. So, it's my honor tonight to introduce our, our new head football coach at Perrysburg High School, Dirk Connor.
Well, I want to thank you all for having me here. I hope you've enjoyed your workshop today, and I want to thank Mr. Jako and Mr. Hostler for the support through this entire process, and also just compliment them on what was, you know, a very competitive but well-run process. Very, I'm sure all of you know I'm currently the athletic director at Bowling Green High School, so I sit on the other side of the desk for a lot of those things, and took a lot of notes about, you know, things that I, I thought were incredibly well-done throughout this. But as that time, as athletic director at Bowling Green High School over the last four years, I've enjoyed that incredibly much, and I treasure that city and the relationships I form. But I've also learned that I am a teacher and a coach, and I can't wait to get back to focusing on that, and get back in a classroom with kids every single day and in the hallway. And, you know, I, I appreciate the support and the enthusiasm that everyone's had, and the things in The Blade and things of that nature, and I certainly welcome that. Pressure's not a bad thing that comes with high expectations, but I'm just excited to get to work. I mean, that's where it really pays off, and that's what I signed up for, and that's what I'm here for. And, you know, I'm excited to be a Yellowjacket, and I thank you for letting me be here tonight. Thank you.
Good to have you.
Mr. Jako, thank you for bringing him tonight, Mr. Connor, and no pressure at all. We're with you winter ties. Is that what they say? No, no. I, I like what, what Mr. Hostler said, Mr. Jako, that a teacher, you're a teacher, and the X's and O's and the Jimmy's and Joe's. It's the classroom environment. It's the billing character with the kids, and I've heard nothing but great things about you through the interview process, and so, welcome to Perrysburg School District.
It's really interesting, because our president, Ray Pullman, was a football coach and a math teacher, and had exemplary rapport with his students. So, when I read that about you, I thought, oh, this is going to be good. So, congratulations.
So, see, maybe a future board president is down the road for you.
Well, thank you again.
And I know you guys have some other stops you need to get to, so thanks for taking the time to be here. I know it means a lot to, to the board, so, thank you.
Yeah, congratulations.
And you look good in the black and gold versus that.
Yeah, there you go.
Scarlet and gray, or red and gray, whatever they have down there.
Ugly colors.
All right. So, thank you for allowing that, and I know he was in the area, and we wanted to make sure that you had a, an opportunity to, to meet with him. And certainly, we're, we're excited, so. I wanted to just, I know it's, it's, it's a new year, but some of the problems that we had last year are still with us, so we wanted to spend a little bit of time getting folks kind of caught up with, with where we are, with, with, relative to COVID. So, so the first, wanted to give some background information. I know there's been a lot of things that have been discussed and, and things that have happened in the last few weeks. So, one, just to remind everybody, this week, January 5th, starting tomorrow through the 8th, the preschool through grade 12 will remain fully remote, and that's what we had talked about in December, and, and that hasn't changed. And lessons will be posted to class on Zooms offered in pre-K through four, and grades five through 12 will follow the synchronous schedule. And that is that schedule that Dr. Short and Mr. Christie discussed at the last board meeting, where students have to physically be up, log into class, be part of the class, and participate, and, and so that's what's going to be taking place. The following week, preschool returns to the hybrid model, which they've been doing all year. The elementary will turn to the hybrid model four days a week in person, and that's what we've been doing all year. HPI is the change, so they'll be coming into the 40-60 hybrid, so ultimately, they're going to be following that same schedule that the junior high and high school is following, where the classrooms are divided up and, and 50% of the students attend at a time. And then grades seven through 12 will remain remote one more week, and that takes us up to the week of January 18th. No changes in, in preschool through sixth, and then grades seven through 12 will return to that alternating day hybrid. So, that is where we left off in December, and, and that leads us up to what's, you know, to parents, what's happening. We've heard the governor say some things. We've heard about testing. How does that change what we're going to do? And in the immediate future, this is the schedule that was decided on, and we're going to stay true to that schedule. On Tuesday, we said this before, and this starts to get into some things that we might want to talk about a little bit further, but on Tuesday, February 16th, we said the board wanted to meet to discuss the data from HPI, the junior high, make decisions about the hybrid status. And with the things that we're going to talk about today, the board may want to consider having that discussion at the work session on February 2nd, because there's some changes to what happened and to our conversations in December, which may influence us to, to want to move that up in the calendar. So, so, so we'll, we'll circle back to that for sure. So, wanted, from the 25th to the 31st, our, our tracking numbers are, look a little different than we've had in the past, but we wanted to share what we have. And, and that, school was not in session, so all of the new cases and, and quarantines that have taken place is due to what is basically self-reporting. People that have contacted us, emailed us, or we've gotten information from the health department. So, we've been away from school, and, and therefore, we're not, we haven't had the same kind of contacts and volume that we had before. So, that's a good thing. And this week, students will not be present, and, and I think, again, as we talked about in December, that's a good thing, because we know people were together over the holidays, and there's an opportunity, a chance of spread taking place, and, and better to have that work out at their own home versus being in the middle of a classroom with 20 other students. But the county did continue with their numbers, and I wanted to highlight the latest information. So, December 30th, we have 106 to 110 active cases. That's the most in, in Wood County. That's the most in, in Wood County. Um, Bowling Green fell to 86 to 90. And just to give a point of reference, because I know it's a new year and that December 23rd, the week before, Perrysburg was at 131, 135. And, and so those are two new data points that we did not have. So that's, that's a good trend line to see those numbers decreasing to where they were. And December 16th, we were at 116 to 120. So it was, it was there and it went up and then it went down. So if you look at those, and I have a slide that captures all that. But, you know, where we were December 9th with 141 to 145, December 2nd, 171, 175. And then November 25th with 191, 195. So where we are today, sitting with 106, um, very different over the months leading up to the holidays. And, and so hopefully this is a trend that we can sustain in our community and, and we're keeping our fingers crossed. Uh, you can see that the numbers are the lowest they've been since November 4th, just to give you perspective. So we're hoping that that continues. Uh, the district-wide quarantines, this just gives you the whole year. So we're week 19 and you can see how, how that trend line works. Um, and then you can see, um, district-wide cases per week trend. And, and again, you know, we're, we're still seeing, you know, 13 cases, 12 cases being self-reported, people letting us know. And with staff, the week 16, you know, heading into the break, uh, 10, and then, uh, week 19, you know, down to two. So, uh, we're, we're, you know, we'll be anxious to see where we take off this upcoming week. I know we had, uh, I think, uh, a number of, of emails today of people that are experiencing symptoms. So we'll see what, how that, what, what happens there. So one point of note I wanted to share is, is for the, for the semester, we've had 170 students positive for COVID. We've had 1,935 students quarantined this semester. Uh, employees, we've had 74 positive for COVID and 158 that have been quarantined. Um, so that gives you an idea of the volume and, and we're going to talk about the quarantine student piece here because there's some information the governor talked about that I think is important to kind of, to, to dig a little deeper into what was said. So the number of, you know, when you, when you take a look and divide the, the number of students, and I, I wanted to point this out, that not all employee and student quarantines are a result of a school exposure. So I think this is important because people say, well, you've had 170 kids positive, 1,900. That's about 11 or 12, uh, you know, students that are having to quarantine per, on average, per positive case. Well, it doesn't work out that way exactly. Um, I would say the number's probably a little bit lower actually. Um, but not all of these quarantines are a result of a school exposure. So if we get a call that, you know, Suzie or Timmy can't make it into school because mom or dad has COVID and they have to quarantine, that ends up on our quarantine list, but it's not because of a school exposure. Um, so it's, it's important to know. But that quarantine piece is something that has been a challenge for us to manage. And when it comes to staff, that, that's the right staff being quarantined or isolated can, can cause a building to have to go full remote, which we've, we've experienced that. So just recently, the governor had some things to say about, um, the study that was done in partnership with the Ohio, um, Department of Health, um, the Ohio, um, and, and Ohio State University, where they, they did some things where there's some preliminary information that they shared that, um, that, that is, is promising. So I wanted to dive into that because we've gotten a lot of comments and I'm sure you as board members have heard similar kinds of comments based on what the governor said last week. So governor, the governor, uh, announced that Ohio is changing its guidance requiring quarantines following in-classroom exposures in K-12 schools. Moving forward, students and teachers exposed to a COVID-positive person in school are no longer required to quarantine. So that's the soundbite that everybody heard. So it's like, it's over. But let's, again, let's dig a little bit deeper because, you know, there's some changes coming, but we really don't know what they are. No longer required to quarantine as long as the exposure occurred in a classroom setting and all students slash teachers were wearing masks and following other appropriate protocols. So the first question that we had was, well, what are appropriate protocols? Because we're doing that now. Um, students are only quarantined when they are in close proximity, which is defined by the Ohio Department of Health and the CDC as less than six feet. So anybody who is six feet, one inch is not being quarantined. So at first blush, we're saying, well, we're, we're kind of doing that now. So I'm not sure what's coming yet. Um, so the next thing is, I think that the document is, is available and, and certainly we can put it, post it on our website for folks to take a look at. And it's a preliminary report and it, it says throughout the document that this is preliminary information. And it says, "Evaluation found no discernible difference in the risk of contacting the, the coronavirus between those in close contact with a COVID-positive person in the classroom and those who were farther away." So close contact has a specific definition to us, which is six feet or less for more than 15 minutes. So the evaluation confirms for us that Ohio's classrooms are safe place for our students and that the commitment our schools have made in keeping kids safe in the classroom is working. And, and we've, we've talked about that with the board in terms of, you know, we're not finding, all, all the way through October, if you recall, we talked about that we're having these students who are being quarantined, but we're not seeing that student-to-student spread. But if you recall, in, in November, we began to say, we're starting to see that student-to-student spread because there's just more COVID and, and, and that was something that we saw. So that did change for us in that close proximity. Um, and then I wanted to highlight that schools should continue to require quarantines for exposed students in situations where masking and distancing protocols were not followed. So the question that we have is, continue to require quarantines for exposed students in situations where masking and distancing protocols were not followed. Well, what are those distancing protocols? So there's, there's a, the encouraging thing is that we could be getting to a place where the state will say to us, and perhaps from now on, if, if they're in a classroom and everyone is in a mask, measure four feet versus six feet. Measure three feet versus six feet. So we're anticipating that that may be the change and the quarantine numbers that we've seen could technically maybe, you know, fall in, in half. Um, so that would be less disruptive and, and that could be beneficial to us. But we want to make sure that we're not doing something that is going to cause continued spread in the classroom. And, and so, you know, we're anxious to see what that is. I think we all want kids to be back in school. We want kids to be back in school face-to-face. We heard the principals talk about that last month. But we also don't want to expose, you know, students to students that have COVID unnecessarily. So trying to find that balance is really what we're about. And I think that's where the governor wants to go with the study. Um, just moving ahead with this, uh, there, there, the document says, "This is a pilot evaluation that is feasible to engage in all school districts to assess potential impact of alternative quarantine procedures for students." So that's what we're waiting for. What is that alternative, um, quarantine procedure for students? And we don't know what that is. So the families that called and said, "I'm sending my child in because quarantines don't exist anymore." Well, wait, timeout. So we're having to let them know that there's more to this. Um, I think that it, it says that, you know, we emphasize two critical points. The data, the, these data are preliminary. Final analysis may be provided with different values and possibly interpretation. So that's a pretty big thing to say in a report, that this is where we are now, but it could change. And we might have a different recommendation. So we don't want to jump in now because they're not done. The second thing is it says, "The pilot evaluation was not intended nor designed to provide the definitive answer regarding mask usage in quarantines in schools. In addition, low rates of test positivity cannot be compared directly to the much higher community test positivity as testing in communities is often promoted by symptomatic illness." So as the community goes, so goes your schools. Um, but there's a lot of disclaimers throughout this, um, study that is saying, we're still building this model. We're still getting the information. January 29th is when we will release this report. So we're waiting on what those guidelines may be. So I'm not anticipating really any changes until January 29th, when the report comes out because that's what the people who are doing the report said would happen. Um, so the study, there's, there's nine school districts throughout the state that participated. Seven participated in COVID testing. And I won't read you the point-by-point, but essentially what they did is, is they, they tracked students who were in close proximity with, within six feet. And then they tested those students to see how many, you know, they, as, as it pointed out here, they tested those students, um, multiple times during that two-week window. Um, tested four times over two weeks to see if they would be positive or not. Um, and, and then they looked at another group of students that were not in close contact and then they tested those students as well. So what they found out, uh, during the evaluation, 1,500 tests were performed. Um, 728 children, 21 had a positive COVID test in the close contact. Um, 2.9% had a positive test. In the other class group, it was 3.6 had a positive test. In the same, uh, class group, uh, zero out of 36 had a positive test. So the rates in the high school and elementary were similar. They had a graph that kind of showed what they were talking about. So, so in the bottom, there was the red, uh, isolate, that is the person who had COVID. And then they measured who was in close proximity. Um, and then they measured those that were, were further out kind of, uh, in comparison in the classroom. And then they just did a classroom, other classroom, just to see what was out there, who was positive if there was no one there. So you can read about that. Um, and the details of the study was designed to evaluate the possible impact. Um, and that would allow students to keep, uh, in the, to stay in the classroom. That, that would be close contacts. If both the close contact and the case were wearing masks properly. This was a pilot evaluation. It was not a research study. It was not, it was, nor was it designed to answer the mask or quarantine question, um, definitively. So this is leading us up to some guidance that could be happening, uh, to change here in the next month. And, and we'll be coming back to the board to let you know what is said about that. So normally in, in a protocol like this, there's embargoed information that is shared with schools. Um, we have it with testing, like, hey, here's what's going to come out. So you can begin to think about it if you have questions. Um, this was something that, um, the governor made the announcement at the press conference. We really didn't know. It was between, you know, Christmas and New Year's. So it kind of caught us a little bit off guard. So we've taken a little bit of time trying to get caught up. But I think it's important to, that, that, that could be a relief because we, we talked about that earlier in the year. And I was on a call with some of these same folks, one of two superintendents, talking about the challenges that quarantine happened. And in September, when we had a bus of 38 students that had to quarantine and we had a classroom of 20 and we felt that there weren't any positive cases from that, this is really hard for parents and students and staff. Um, but when our volume increased, when the community spread increased in, in November and December, we started to see that community spread happen where earlier we didn't. So it's something that, you know, we're, um, we're excited about this conversation. But we also want to make sure that it's protecting our students and our staff, you know? And that's one of the things, they tested the students, which is, which is good and helpful. But we also have to keep in mind that we have a staff member in those classrooms, um, as well. So, so that's the study. That's the talk. So we're, we're excited, but for those folks that are saying no more quarantine for schools, I think that's a little bit premature. And based on the results of this, um, and you can go to board docs and pull, um, pull down the presentation, but this document we will post out there. Um, I think it just shows that, um, you know, they want to make a change. They want to make it work better for getting kids back in school. And again, it's kind of a nice segue into the vaccine conversation, which also happened since our last board meeting. So Governor DeWine said there's no official date to begin rolling out the next phase of the vaccine distribution. So right now they're currently in tier 1A. And at the same time, the governor is saying that the, the mid-January was his goal to start getting into, uh, vaccinating folks that are identified as in tier 1B. And, um, he wants to have all students, uh, back in the classrooms March 1. So I want to pause before I go further with the whole vax, vaccine presentation here. That back in classroom, kind of like, well, what does that mean exactly? Because we are back in the classroom. Um, you know, there's times where like right now, we're not, but the governor said we shouldn't be actually. Um, so, so we're kind of struggling with, you know, we are back in the classroom. We're in a hybrid mode. So if his goal is everyone back in the classroom full-time by March 1st, then, then I think we have to clarify what that is. But for us, um, the tier 1A, the first responders, nursing home residents and staff, um, they have to be accounted for in tier 1A. And that has to happen before they can get to starting and allocating doses for tier 1B. So right now they're still getting to those nursing homes. They're still getting to those hospital workers, healthcare workers, um, first-line responders. And once that is completed, then we can begin to talk about what's going to happen in, in tier 1B. So that's the, the question that Gretchen answered is, well, when? Well, we think probably about maybe February, uh, but, but we're not 100% sure. But we're anticipating by that time. The, the, uh, US, the CDC has said that, that right now, that these doses are not approved to give to, to children. They weren't part of that, uh, the trial. So this is only applying to adults, so 16 and over. So when we talked about tier 1B, I had somebody say, well, the students are getting it too. And, and no, this is only talking about school personnel. Um, and, and so that's not part of this, uh, conversation at this time. So what does that mean for us here? Um, we're working with the health department. We had a, a, a meeting this morning to talk about timelines, uh, the guidelines for administration. So one of the challenges, and, and again, these require two doses. So we have to come up with a plan that has to be very flexible. Because Wood County doesn't know how many doses they're going to get until they arrive. So that Monday, let's say February, the first Monday in February, they call us and say, we have, it'd be great to say, we have 750 doses for Perrysburg schools and we can do all of our staff that week with the first dose. That would be great. But probably what's happening is we will have 75 doses for Perrysburg this week. So we will have to have a plan that will pull those folks in and then the next batch and then the next. So that's how it seems to be going, but they're anticipating there to be more availability. So we're, we're keeping our fingers crossed. One person can administer approximately 50 doses per day. So again, if our number here in this district is 750, you know, how many, you're doing 50 a day with one person? It gives you an idea of the scope of how we have to plan for this moving forward. There is a, with this vaccine, there are, um, as with any kind of situation with people, there, there's people that have, um, allergic reactions that maybe they don't know about until they get exposed to that allergen. And these, uh, vaccines are the same way. And, and so that, one of the things that has to happen is after you receive the vaccine, um, for 15 minutes, you need to be there and observe so that, no, you're not having one. And I, the number, uh, the rate of people that are having this is, is very low, the, these kind of reactions. But, you know, when we're dealing with thousands of people, millions of people, 700 people, there's a chance that somebody may. So it's not a matter of walking in, getting a shot and then walking out. So part of the challenge is you have to have people that get the shot, sit down and you have to have somebody observing them for 15 minutes to make sure they're not having a reaction. So that's one of the challenging things that we have to do. We're looking at, the 750 includes all of our Wood County ESC staff because it's much easier for us to include them with our vaccines than to have them go somewhere else. We'll just include them with, uh, the Perrysburg staff and also all of our supplemental staff. So when you think about the staff that, that might have. So when you think about the staff that might have a role with coaching or other activities where they're working with kids, we've included all of those folks as well. And so our plan is, we're going to have a follow-up meeting with Wood County to coordinate that planning and what takes place. And we're also kind of, you know, until told otherwise, we're going to have a plan in place so that on February 1st, if we get that phone call a week earlier, a week later, whenever we get that phone call, we'll be ready to say, let's go. And the other thing that they've talked about is, you know, when they open a vial sometimes, and they're giving it, it's for 10, you know, per vial, but sometimes they get 12. And that's normal because of the different types of, you know, the vials and syringes and those kinds of things. And they said you have to have people on standby, because they don't want a single dose to get, to not be applied. So now that we'd have to have a bank of people that, you know, hey, listen, you need to be here in two hours. Come on in. So we're planning, who's going to manage all that? Who is the staff that we're going to pull to come up with the plan? And so we're going to work on that as a team, and then, you know, coordinate it the best of our ability. So I think between now and then, we really need to educate our employees on the vaccine. If the only thing that you've read about the vaccine is on social media, we probably have our work cut out for us. So there's a lot of things that people, you know, aren't sure about, or they've heard this, or they've heard that. So the next few weeks, I think, will really be critical for us to begin to talk to our staff about giving them factual information from doctors, from scientists about the vaccine, how it was developed, and, you know, why this is a benefit for you. And people will have to make that decision ultimately for themselves. And it's not mandated. But we would like to have 28 students in a classroom this year. And if you're a teacher, we hope that you consider the vaccine so that you can be there. But we understand not everybody is going to be comfortable with that. But we want to give them the information so they're not making that decision based on their friend from junior high's Facebook post. You know, so that's a lot of work. I did want to point out that the OEA, which is the teachers' union, that the largest teachers' union in Ohio, Perrysburg is part of the OEA, the Ohio Education Association. Their president said, we're grateful for the governor. You know, we have, we've, we have been nothing short of heroic in their efforts for teachers to reach and teach Ohio students, often forced to put their own safety in front of their families and communities on the line. The OEA is encouraging vaccines for all of its members that are eligible. So this is something that, you know, as a board, we certainly want to encourage our staff to do it. The Health Department wants to encourage, you know, there's a lot, you know, when we start getting that many people behind it who've really looked at this, I think it's important to get that word out, so. And I know we've pulled up questions. I know we get a lot of emails every week about, we do a presentation like this, the inbox will be full tomorrow with mostly comments. You know, why don't we do this? Or have you thought of that? Or you should be doing this? Or why can't we do this? And then there's sometimes some questions. So we like to capture those and work them in. And some of the questions I've answered in the presentation, so we're directing people to watch. But here's a couple of questions that came in. You know, how many hospitalizations have resulted in cases reported from the beginning of school to present? And that's a great question. We, when we communicate with families about their child or staff, we ask a few questions. You know, when did they have symptoms? Because that's important, that we give that information to the Health Department. When can that student or faculty member be back? And then we've begun to ask, and we shared this with the board, were you exposed to somebody? Do you know who you were exposed to that was positive? Because that helps us with that pie chart. I didn't include it with the building data, because there wasn't any in the last two weeks. But where are they getting it? And that's important. So we document those things. And sometimes, because we can't ask because of HIPAA, you know, has your child been hospitalized? Sometimes they will offer that information or information about their family. But we don't require that. So we don't know. With staff, we do know a little bit more about that. And we've had staff or their spouses hospitalized. Thankfully, not for a long period of time. But it's been serious enough where folks have had to go in to receive medical attention. So to answer that question is, with students, we don't ask. With staff, we do know that some folks have had to go that route, and it's a serious illness. So when we talk about the classroom, we can't forget the teachers are part of that classroom. And we need to make sure. And that's why this vaccine is really important, I think, for their health and well-being. How many students quarantined actually got COVID? And we talked about that with the study. I think our numbers track with them pretty closely. The challenging part in the last month for us has been, there's been so much spread of COVID, it's hard to know where you got it. You know, so there was somebody, you know, Timmy in class had it. But also, you know, so I could have got it from Timmy, but also my uncle has it, and I was with him last weekend. So it's hard to pinpoint exactly where it came from. But we, you know, like I said, when we began to change that conversation with the public and the board, like, we're starting to see that student-to-student spread. It was before it really blossomed. And so we were, we did see some cases. And certainly on teams, we saw that spread, even in the summer, where it would go through the team that were together. And we've always been monitoring this. And how many students are now in counseling over depression? When families choose to make a decision to send their child to counseling, we're not often involved with that decision. And sometimes we are, and sometimes families keep it private. So we really don't know. One of the things that we do track from year to year is suicide ideation. So when this question came up, it was like, well, since we don't have access to who's in private counseling, and, you know, our counselors are doing a great job of connecting with students. But in terms of tracking that kind of mental health need, I asked about the suicide ideation. And suicide ideation is down from where it was last year. Last year, it was increased, you know, in the year before. And this year, it's down. And there's two schools of thought. One is, maybe it's because students aren't necessarily in school, and they're not reporting to teachers as often, or they're not in school as often, and they're not having that contact with staff to feel comfortable sharing it. The other school of thought is, we know that school is a source of anxiety for many students, a source of depression for students, just the nature of being in school with others. And there's less, you know, talking about older students, there's less, they're in school less. So maybe that anxiety is reduced as well. So there isn't a fast answer to that question. But mental health is something that we are very concerned about. I think each month, we've done these presentations. It's been part of what the board has shared or questioned about students and the need. Never has it been just about six feet. It's also about what are students missing academically? What are they missing socially, emotionally? And trying to find that balance. It's always been part of our plan. And any changes we make, we think about those things. So those are great questions. And, you know, like I said, we do take a look at the feedback that we get. And we do try to address those things as we go through presentations. But so for us, you know, I'll kind of wrap up. With the next several weeks, our plan, unless the board would like to visit that again, I think we're just moving forward with what we laid out. The governor's talk gave a lot of people hope that this whole, you know, no more quarantine. I think we've been able to say that that's not the case, that we have to wait a little bit. And the vaccine on the horizon for teachers, and we are grateful for the governor to give us that opportunity to put them in line, shows his commitment to education and getting kids back. And we're excited about that being a possibility for us. And we're looking forward to that. So it's going to be a couple of months of still updates, numbers, cases. You know, it's a new year, but we know that we've got a couple of months before we start to see maybe that light. And I think the vaccine's going to be a big part of that. So I'll open up to any questions. I know that was a lot of, a lot of COVID stuff for the new year, kind of bring down the room, so.
Well, when the, when the governor says, okay, schools get the vaccine February 1st, what's our plan?
So the Health Department, the meeting today with the Health Department talked about, one of the things that has to be decided this week, and it's not going to be decided by each school district, but what the county wants to do is come up with a plan that will be applied to all Wood County schools. So if Tom in Perrysburg says, we're going to put our bus drivers first, and, you know, Dan Kreps at Rossford says, we're putting our teachers first, you know, that, all of a sudden, there's, well, why? And they want to avoid that. So what they want to do is come up with guidelines for all the school districts. There's two ways that they're considering. One of them is just, everybody on staff, do it in age bands. Because we know that people who are older have greater risk than people who are younger. So part of it could be building your master list and putting, you know, the 55 to 65 and above, that's your first band. And then your second band is, and then just go through there. So it could be just based on your age. So you could have teachers teaching side by side, one who's 55, one who's 25. That 55 is going to get theirs before the 25.
And who's going to administer it?
So we're working on the plan right now. So what was discussed with us today was that they are open to having our school nurses be part of that administering the shots, you know, the vaccine. We could also reach out to, like, for example, we have a relationship with Mercy Health to say, can you help us and bring some of your nurses in when we do this? They also said that volunteers who have a medical background could, through the county, be authorized to administer these. So there, if there's a family member who has a medical background that would like to do it and wants to help out, because the more people that are able to administer the doses, the quicker we can get through.
Well, I guess I don't understand, because we've talked, there's so much talk about the refrigeration. How can we refrigerate the doses?
So I'm going off of memory, so I don't want to misspeak. But my understanding is, once it, there's a window of when it can be thawed and how long to be administered. So within that window is when you have to administer it. So the MRDD here in Wood County has already begun to administer. That is the residential and school setting for individuals who have development disabilities. They are able, they've done this. So we had a long conversation with them about, what did you learn in this process? Because they had to administer it. And so there's a window. So it has to be refrigerated. But once you get it out of refrigeration, you have a certain amount of time to administer it. And you have to administer it. So that's why you have to have people on standby. Like, we've got two doses here. The next two, you have to be here within so many hours, because then they can't administer it.
I understand that in a lot of, like, the nursing homes, they're thawing it out, and then all the people are saying, I'm not doing it. And what happens then? And do we anticipate a reaction like that that has happened in Ohio?
So I think that's where that education piece is really vital to our staff, to make sure that they're getting the right information and understanding this in a scientific, in a medical way. And, you know, the science of this type of a vaccine, and the years that have gone into the vehicle that it's being placed in, and the development of that, and then how this was tested. I think when you start to hear those things, you feel much differently about it than that feeling of, well, this is just rushed. Well, there's a lot of information out there about how long it took to develop the vehicle, which they put the vaccine in and deliver it, is different. And there's years of that. The amount of people that they did the testing on, you know, they've done a lot of work on this. So it's not this kind of rush. But because of the volume of people that have COVID and how they did the test protocols, you know, me personally, that's speaking for me, I felt a lot better about it when you start to hear those things. But so that's why I think getting that information, we will do a survey with staff as we start to educate, get information out to them about, you know, yes, no, you know, what are your thoughts? So I think that's important to have that idea, because we'll need that as part of our planning, too. So, and then having individuals, you know, so once the vaccine is on site, and there's two doses left, and there's nobody left to administer it to, that's why having people know that you might get a call and you need to be here. We'll keep calling down that list until we get someone to give it. We won't let it go. So that's, you know, how we're approaching it.
Any other questions for Mr. Hossler?
Back on, back on the quarantining, you know, I've kind of held this belief, correct me if I'm wrong, but a lot of the district's quarantine policy has been informed, if not mandated, by Wood County Health Department. And have they weighed in on this preliminary report? Have they offered any insights, thoughts as to what it means? I mean, I accept everything you said. I read, I saw DeWine's, you know, I saw the press conference. I too said, quarantine's over, this is great. Then I read the report, I saw the data set, you know, seven schools, or nine schools out of 600-plus, and all kinds of caveats about preliminary. And I didn't know what to make of it. So thanks for that context. But, you know, always valuing what the medical experts are saying. Have they weighed in on that report?
They are, I think they're waiting to see what the guidance is. So right now, I think that, you know, they'll see what the guidance is. There is, there's a reason that six foot is the guidance, because there's research. There's science behind, within six feet in a mask, this much time, because they have enough of that information to make that determination. When you start arbitrarily saying three foot, there isn't the science that shows that three, there's a difference between three foot, two foot, and four foot. So I think, I don't want to speak for the Health Department, but I think there is concern that we're based on practices that saves people's lives. And we know that six feet is there for a reason. Going shorter than that, let's see what the information says. So I don't want to speak for them, but that was kind of my impression, that let's wait and see what it says. So that's a good question.
And I think the staff has been busily working for what they call COVID reset, to going back and looking at our protocol, and making sure six feet and seating charts and things of that nature. So if anything, I think we've improved from the first semester on our practice.
We've learned a lot, there's no doubt about it. And had an opportunity to email, exchange with a parent today about the quarantines and the idea of, you know, well, one student gets COVID and 100 students have to quarantine. And I said, well, let's take a look at this data. Let's talk about this. And I think, you know, when people hear it and understand, and I said, you know, the reason that we're sending this team that is working 12 hours a day, and they're physically going into classrooms and measuring, is that so we don't have to quarantine one more student than we have to. Because otherwise, we would look at the seating chart and would say, well, Timmy sat here. Here's the, so we're actually going, because seats move and change. So if we can give that one student that ability to not be quarantined, it's worth that effort. So that's why we do what we do. And I think some people thought it reverse, like, well, they're trying to catch us. And it's like, no. We would just look at the seating chart in the office and say, okay, these kids here in this circle. But by physically going there, we're being very careful. And we've learned a lot, to your point, where we've said, you know, if you just did this, and if you did this, and if you moved these chairs here, we wouldn't have to quarantine these three kids. And that's the reset. So we're really working hard to keep those kids in the classroom and not catch them, as some folks have thought. That's not what we want to do at all. We want them there as much as we can.
Absolutely.
I think that's a point that really needs to be made. I think it's getting lost in all of the hybrid and asynchronous and synchronous learning and all of that. I got an email where the parent was pretty upset that we don't have our students in school. And the comment that somebody made, and I thought it was the governor, that, well, we'll let the locals decide, was that, well, it doesn't always translate that we get the decision, or we decide, and then they change the rules of the game. But I think it, we hear it, and it surprises me that the public isn't hearing it as much as it's being said. We've never wanted the students out of school. We've always wanted them in school. We still want them in school. But what is the safest way going to be? And until Week 13, we thought we had it nailed. And then for some reason, everything went. sideways and handbasket. But if we hadn't done what we had done, it could have been ever so much worse. So again, I, I am just full of praise for everything that y'all have done to give us those 13 weeks, with that incorporated, all that learning, so that we're starting this semester, I think, super strong, considering. And I'm, I'm looking forward to how, how this is all going to play out, and hopefully we can, because it's been the quarantining that's been the killer. I mean, it's a portrait of words, but it's, that's what's caused all the disruption, as you put it, is the quarantining. And if that can make more sense, then I think we'll, I think we'll see some huge normalcy come back. So I hope this, I hope this works.
Mrs. Laramo, I think I may have received the same email you have. I think a majority of our community understands, again, as Mr. Hosler pointed out, the soundbites say one thing, but the data shows another, or the information they provided. If you look at seven out of 611 school districts, 0.1% they got some information from, 0.1% of the schools in the state of Ohio. So that's why, again, the report's not complete till the end of January, and there's more information to come. But it's nice to have Superintendent Hosler aware and the board aware, our staff aware of the facts. And I think tonight, this is what this is doing, is helping educate our staff and our public about what really is being said. And we need to wait to see what's, what's next, so.
It's encouraging that they're looking at it, they're talking about it, everybody getting, right, we want kids back in school. The quarantining at times doesn't make sense on its face. So at least I'm encouraged that.
Yes.
We're going to make some progress.
We're moving forward. I think we're taking, moving forward on a lot of issues, and it's helpful.
Yeah, we've, we've had, I mean, to follow up with Ms. Laramo, we, 36% of our students have been quarantined in the first semester.
Wow.
And that's with the hybrid. So imagine if those classrooms had 28 kids, I mean, would it, would it be 55%? I mean, that's, so when the people say, we need to get everyone up there, we need to do that, and it's like, already, this is where we are, and that's disruptive, but imagine what it would be like if we didn't have that. So that's, that's been the...
So speaking of disruptive, not to throw a blanket on all this rosy talk here.
I think I know where this is going.
Yeah, I hear you. With, with the Prime Minister looking to shut down Britain again completely, is there, are you hearing anything about that here? It seems like we're starting to loosen up a little bit. And, and then, of course, y'all know my daughter in Vermont, they're, they're absolutely terrified of one another. It seems like we're taking a better approach. I, I would hate to think that we're, would take the Prime Minister's viewpoint on this and thinking that shutting everything down again is going to be the way to go.
Yeah, I'm hoping the vaccine, you know, we start to, to get into having that happen before, that, and what you're referring to is in England, this, this strand of COVID, which is very, very contagious, spreads very quickly. There's been a handful of cases here in the United States they have found. So it's almost feeling like a race against the clock. So if we can get, you know, more people vaccinated and, you know, so that's, that's the kind of feeling. But it has this kind of eerie, I thought of this the other day, when they said, well, I think there's a couple in California, maybe there's one in Colorado. And you're, it's like, that's how we were talking about COVID in...
Back in January.
You know, in January. It's like, well, there's one here, one here, and then look where we are today. So I think it's this, you know, that's why the masks, that why the hygiene, all those things are really important, even with this, you know, strand that's out there so contagious. If you're doing those kinds of things, you're still protected. You're still better off. And I think that's going to be the fight till the bitter end, so.
I, somewhere over this past week, I read, a couple, last couple of days, that at the rate we are currently giving the vaccine, it's going to take seven years to get herd immunity. That was mind blowing to me.
I think, I think things are going, I think things will get faster. I mean, that's what the Health Department was talking about, is that the production and the, how it's, I mean, right now, it's not moving as fast, but I think they're figuring out, just like us, we figured out how to be more efficient, how to do things differently. I think they're going, I think there's a learning curve with, with that, too. So I think the challenge is just getting the doses in their hands and then, you know, getting them out.
Anybody else? Mrs. Eubank?
Yes, I have a question. I just want a clarification on the CDC, when they came out with that report, I believe it was last month, where they took the quarantine time down. And the Wood County made their suggestion on what the school should do. I just want to clarify, that was the suggestion, but we as a board, we could adopt the CDC requirements. Is that correct? If it was proposed and brought up and voted on?
So if I, I don't have that in front of me, so it's hard for me to say, to comment on it, so I'm not as familiar with it. But I, if I'm thinking about the same guideline, I think, so to answer your question, I mean, the board could choose to not follow the CDC guidelines and, and do that. Then obviously, the Health Department or others could point to that. So it, it happens, and, so I think, you know, to answer your question, the board could say, we, we want to follow that guideline. I think knowing, and that's where not having it in front of me, I think one of the challenges with that guideline is, and again, it's one of those things, like what the governor did is like, no more quarantining. Well, you can have 10 days. I think that's what it said, is we could reduce it to 10 days. But in that, you had, there were some, there were some caveats that you had to follow to get there. And one of them is that you can't be within six feet of anybody during that, that time period until 14 days. And I think that was a challenge that the Health Department said in a school setting, it's really hard to have a student who is not less than six feet from any other student to be able to do that. So I think there was a piece of that that was a real challenge, where they couldn't, you know, in a work environment, you could go back and isolate yourself, maybe, but when you're in a classroom and you're in that setting, it might be more challenging. So there was something to it, and I don't recall, I apologize, I don't have it here. So I can't comment really about it any further.
Okay, that takes us to item number four. If we could, I'm looking here at the agenda, if we can take 401 through 45 and vote on that all at one time. It is more on personnel with resignations and contracts and so forth. If you take a second to look through that.
We have 406 we added.
Do you want to do 406 separately, or do you want to include that? Is it going to be added into the same mix?
I think we already voted to put it in the consensus.
Okay, yeah, all right, so 401 through 406. 406 being FF CRA that we've added. That's okay, we'll take a motion to accept 401 through 406.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Mrs. Harrington?
Ms. Laramo?
Yes.
Mr. Bennington?
Yes.
Mrs. Downs?
Yes.
Mr. Pullman?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank?
Okay, motion passes. And it takes us now to five, which is board discussion. And we have before us here the resolution for remote voting and participation. And basically what this is, is House Bill 197 is, been adopted and gone and expired in December. And so we have the General Assembly's House Bill 404, which extends all the provisions in House Bill 197. And so that supersedes our board policy on attending board meetings and in person and voting. And then we've got, in the second paragraph, second sentence, we've added some language. And I'm going to suggest at this time that perhaps, just, just my thought is, if we could ask our policy committee, Mr. Bennington and Mrs. Laramo, if you could take that to your committee, that language, and have it looked at and bring back a recommendation to the board. And so we know that the House Bill 404 continues till July, July 1st, 2021. God forbid if this pandemic continues, but we don't know what will come up. But if you, as a committee, would bring back to the board recommendation for this language, then that could become part of our board policy that we could use for the future of in-person voting during this time. And the whole premises was, if our staff's here, we felt we should be here in person to conduct a board meeting. So is that, I open that up for discussion. It's just a, a thought.
No, I agree.
I'm new on policy committee, so I'll let the policy committee chair speak for me.
Mrs. Downs, you have any comments on that?
I do not at this time.
Okay. Mrs. Eubank?
Um, yeah, so if, so my question is, what is the purpose of this resolution? And why would we, as a board, have a resolution that directly limits the ability of a board member to fulfill the position that they were elected for?
I think that's what we're going to have the policy committee look into. I think Mrs., what we're hearing, Mrs. Eubank, throughout the state of Ohio, there's, there's people that sometimes abuse a House bill or a policy, and it's not meant to be used for what they're using it for. And so that's why I suggested to our policy committee to take that language, beat it up a little bit, look into it, and bring it back to the, the board for a, for a vote. It has to have two readings before you can vote for it. And again, if I can emphasize, if I can emphasize, if I can emphasize this, Mrs. Eubank, the, for me, as a board member, when our staff is working, custodians, secretarial administration, teachers, bus drivers, when they're working, and we have a scheduled board meeting, and I'm not, I don't have COVID, I'm not quarantined, I should be, I think it's important for us to be here in person to conduct a meeting. And that's just my personal opinion. In past practice with board minutes and board meetings, if you were ill, you could not attend a meeting, you couldn't vote from home. But because of the pandemic, House Bill 197 was introduced and adopted, and now House Bill 404 continues 197. So to answer your question in a short way, is staff's in session? I felt the board should be in session.
Well, let me ask you this. Is there, so is teaching the same as voting at a board meeting? Are we equating the two as being the same? Because to me, you can't even compare. A third grade teacher is more effective being in class, teaching that teacher. A teacher that teaches Chinese to a high school student is more effective being in person. I, we, as a board member, voting makes no difference in person or away and not at a meeting on Zoom. Our job makes no difference. You cannot compare the two. A custodian cannot do their job virtual, nor could a bus driver. But we, as school board members, can and do it effectively.
That's where I disagree strongly, vehemently, and adamantly. We have had to sit here and wait.
And how so, please?
We have had, and there was another good example. We have had to sit here and wait for you to respond. We have had to sit here and be interrupted because you can't hear us. You cannot react with us, you cannot conduct business with us because of the dual platforms that this is creating. It's one thing to be absent because you're sick or you're quarantined. This bill, this House bill, was allowing, under these extreme circumstances, for a board member, and not just board, any public organization, to be able to conduct business so that they wouldn't fall apart. That was the problem, with that businesses and public organizations were risking falling apart because they couldn't conduct business, because they couldn't get together because of the pandemic. So ergo, HB 197 was born. It wasn't just for school boards. School boards are here because we're, we're public, and so we fell under the parameters of this. Our schedule is put out a year in advance. And every school board member in the state of Ohio knows what their schedule is a year in advance. You choose to go on vacation and not fulfill your duty as a school board member, that's on you, and you go somewhere else. That's fine. There are times when you have a conflict. Might be work, it might be Gretchen has her, her garden club meetings, which take her nationwide. Ray has his meetings that sometimes take him out of state. Eric, goodness gracious, you're on, I don't know how many gazillion things that you have to do, yet the priority is that we were elected by our constituents to be here for our board meetings. That is a priority. I tell my work, board meeting, priority. I am responsible to my constituents who put me here to be here. It is very difficult for us to have to, to be able to converse with you when you're not here because of the delay. It is hard for you to be able to converse with us because of the delay. You don't get to see and interact. Just as you said, it is difficult, or a teacher at home is better to, is better with, with their students than being at home. It is better for us to be here to work together than it is to be separated or on several different platforms. It's just that simple. And this bill wasn't designed to do, to allow members of any public entity to choose to do or conduct their business from anywhere, any place, at any time. The priority is still to conduct your business in person, together. When the pandemic precludes that, then this gives us a little bit of breathing room so that we can still conduct business, though poorly and not as effectively, but we can still be viable. Again, this bill was not designed just for school boards. We happen to fall under its purview. But it's, it's for any public business. So yes, it is important that we're here. We told our constituents that we would be here to conduct their business with the school district. And it makes it very difficult when we're not all together. So, yeah, this is not an excuse to be able to go wherever you want to be and think that that's just as good. No, here is just as good. If you're, if you're sick and, it, it is a fault of the law. It is a fault of the law. But that is, it was not the intention of the law. So yes, we are supposed to be here. It was clearly obvious, when our meetings are scheduled, you work around when the meetings are scheduled, if you want to be on the board.
But in 2021, when every business in the world has asked themselves, what can we do remotely? There are cases being... There are cases being over Zoom. Doctors are doing telemed. That is what we are in today. This is, whatever happened pre-COVID, this is, this bill allows you to do that remotely and do your job voting. That's what it comes down to.
You know what, Kelly? I'm gonna interrupt you here.
Remotely.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I can't, I cannot agree with what you're saying in any way, shape, or form. If my doctor, if I'm desperately ill and I call my doctor, and my doctor answers me on Zoom from his beach, I'm not gonna think he cares much, or he has the ability to diagnose much from the beach. I'm just not, and I'm never going to see that doctor again. I think we ran for this office, we knew when we ran, that the Ohio revised code and almost all codes. I was at a, at a session of the United States Congress, and Senator Warner left his hospital bed because he felt that the vote was so important. He left, he had cancer. He subsequently died, I think. But he left his hospital bed to go to the Senate floor because that was the only place he could vote. Now, a pandemic has changed that, but it doesn't change our responsibility to, to the people we represent, to the functioning of the school, to say, well, I would rather be on the beach, and so therefore, I think I still deserve the right to vote. I don't even know, when you speak, I don't even see you. When, when Eric was speaking, I could look at him, I could see what his eyes were doing. I got a feeling for what he was saying. I had no idea. I see a little black square, and maybe you're in it, maybe you're not even in it. I can't see from here. So I have no idea what you're thinking. None.
But as a board member, our level of impact remains the same in person or virtual.
You know what? You have missed four meetings, Kelly. You have been on vacation for four meetings. Do you think, when they passed this bill, they said, you know what, let's, let's just let anybody vote, anytime, anyplace? If they don't want to go, they don't want to be part of discussions, they can go to Florida, they can go to Las Vegas, wherever they want to go and be on vacation and tune in and vote. I don't think that was the intent.
Gretchen, I have not missed, I have not missed four meetings. I have no idea what you were talking about. You brought this up at the meeting in November, that, that yes, I was out of town. I don't know what you're talking about, that I've missed four.
Well, one time you were in Michigan.
Completely incorrect.
One time in Texas.
But I think it's quite odd that you're actually keeping track. Because I can effectively do the job, voting on the issues. That's what it comes down to, voting on the issue. This is 2021, where, again, so many businesses are doing voting or doing remote business.
I like...
I mean, it's such old school thinking. That's what it comes down to. This is old school thinking.
I like, I like, excuse me, I'd like to move the previous question and end a debate on this question. I don't need a motion, there's first and a second.
So moved.
Since we aren't voting, I think that's a very good discuss, good thing to say. So I second it or whatever.
Roll call, please, Mrs. Harrington.
Ms. Laramo?
Yes.
Mrs. Downs?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank?
Yes.
Mr. Bennington?
Yes.
Mr. Pullman?
Yes.
Okay, so at this time, is there anything else that you'd like to bring up? Any other question you'd like to bring to the board?
Do we need to vote on the resolution as amended?
Not at this, I don't think we have to at this time, Mr. Hostler. Would you think, we can wait to have the next meeting, to have it amended, to remove that?
Yeah, it's part of the, it's a board discussion, so it wasn't presented as an action item. So the most, the idea was to have it referred to Policy Committee and then bring it back to, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct, that's correct.
I'm, I'm confused, because if this, this is in reference to 404, which is now in effect, for the fact that 197 is no longer in effect, therefore, we, if we don't have a resolution accepting of 404, then we are back to original policy.
Let's see, our, but our next meeting's gonna be, we'll have it by the next meeting, which is, what, two weeks, June or January?
We'll have the first reading.
Well, you can, we can, we can bring back the resolution.
We can bring back the resolution as amended.
Or House Bill 404. But then you can work, the Policy Committee can work on the language for the future.
Okay, so in between now and then, we're back to pre-197 standards?
Yes.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Yeah, so what?
Because we have no acceptance now of 404.
January 19th. So in two weeks, we'll be back here with the resolution in front of us to supersede our current board language and go with House Bill 404.
Okay.
In the meantime, Mr. Bennington and Mrs. Laramo, you work on that language for, that the board discussed in December's meeting.
That's the date.
Anything else, anything else anybody would like to discuss before we adjourn? Hearing none, again, thank you for being here this evening and for your work that you've put in for this 21, a school year.
Yeah.
And I thank you for, again, for your vote of confidence as president. And Mr. Bennington, looking forward to working with you again as the vice president.
As am I.
At this time, we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Laramo?
Yes.
Mr. Bennington?
Yes.
Mrs. Downs?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank?
Yes.
Mr. Pullman?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned. Have a good evening.